The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, February 11th, 2020 is not called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Mrs. Vivian Sally of the Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to come and provide a prayer with you tonight. If everyone would please pray with me. Creator of all, we have many faiths and beliefs, open our hearts to you. Please accept our gratitude in every holy name we call you. We are so grateful for your grace, mercy, and unconditional love. We ask for your guidance throughout tonight's meeting. We are painfully aware of the ignorance, fear, mistrust, and evil that divides us. Guide our county leaders to work together for the benefit of the people they serve and who trust them to always do the right thing. Help us to help them create a community in every zip code filled with kindness, peace, unity, and respect for each other. Creator, we ask that you bless and keep us as we complete life's journey and the work that has been planned for each of us, even before we were born. In your name, amen.
Thank you very much. Next, our position, committee questions, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Krasinski.
Mr. President, I would like to make the motion to appoint Jason Critchlow and Thomas Bryce to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission and reappoint David H. Eckrich to the St. Joseph County Water and Resources Advisory Board.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. A second has been already put on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. Jason Critchlow and Thomas Bryce are appointed to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, and David Eckrich is reappointed to the St. Joe County Water Resources Advisory Board. Mr. Nolan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to hold Bill 5-20 in committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 520 is held in committee. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 14th, 2020 public hearing?
Seven.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the January 14th, 2020 public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor?
No report.
Report from the county commissioners?
No report.
Report from any council special committee committees?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Tanzarek.
I'm not on any special committee, but Commissioner, he still needs to give us a report. It's good news, and it got released to the media today that MCT, the South Shore Railroad, did receive their Phase 2 approval from the Federal Transit Administration. Just want to share that with the public. Phase 2 is engineering, so they'll go into a final engineering phase for the double-track Northwest Indiana Project, which our county will stand to gain a reduced travel cost to travel in point west once that's completed. And basically, a Phase 2, the engineering phase, generally leads to Phase 3, which is a full funding grant agreement from federal government. It's rare, and I don't want to say it's never happened, but usually, there's never been a case where a full funding grant agreement hasn't been established, once you've gotten approval from the FTA that you can go on to the engineering phase. Pretty much, the FTA is kind of giving you a sample approval, saying they believe in the project, they know the project's tried and true, and that you'll probably get a full funding grant agreement, so just wanted to share that with the public. Also, I did speak to Mike Nolan, the president of the railroad today, and his intention and hope is that, once they get engineering completed, he would hope that they would get a full funding grant agreement by May of 2021, and they would begin construction immediately, and hope to be completed with construction by the fall of 2023 or 2024. Just a little update on MCT, South Shore Railroad.
Thank you very much, sir. Next on the agenda, our first readings. Quickly, please read Bill number 12-20.
(Inaudible) supplementing Title 15 land use, chapter 154, zoning of San Francisco County, property located at 13463 and 13479, State Road 23, from our single-family to old office district petitioner, petitioners Patrick McGann and Henry Hung Lee.
Bill number 12-20 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, resolutions. Quickly, please read Resolution Bill number 13-20.
Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council, adopting and approving the St. Joseph County Energy Leadership Program Guide for Petitioners, St. Joseph County Council.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, bringing this resolution forward, or is just a kind of give the county employees an indication from the council that we are in support of the energy management program, and we want to give some authority to the new energy management director, because he's trying to implement these processes and procedures.
Thank you, sir. Any member, any questions from council for Mr. Nolan?
And if you have any technical questions, we are in our services.
Any further questions from Mr. Nolan, or technical questions from everybody? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 1320. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 1320. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 1320 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments on 1320 from council? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 13-20 was passed by a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Next on the agenda, salary amendments. Quickly, please read Bill number 1120.
(Inaudible) amendments and ordinance, amending ordinance 80-19, the same being of ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2020. Petitioner, treasurer.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number 1120 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Please take your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address to council, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Crook. I'm the St. Joe County Treasurer. I have offices on the second floor of this building, and this ordinance is basically a request to reinstate approximately $2,300 that got, I think inadvertently removed from our budget during the last budget cycle. As you recall, we did some reorganization in our office. We eliminated a couple of full-time people. We added a year-round, part-time person, and throughout the different discussions, the numbers changed several different times, and I think when the final numbers came in, there was this odd $2,300 that was left over, and instead of being put back into the part-time account, I think it just got pulled out inadvertently. So it's money that I need if I am going to have a couple of temporary people during our two busy seasons in May and November, so it's just a request to put that money back in. It's technically increasing our budget, but if you look at where our numbers were the last several years, it's bringing it back to where it has historically been.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. Any questions from council for the treasurer? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 1120. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 1120. Do I hear a motion?
(Inaudible).
Motion to pass Bill 1120 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 11-20 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number 920.
(Inaudible) amending ordinance 80-19, the same being of ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2020. Petitioner, prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski? Can I make a report, please, sir?
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Prosecutor?
Good evening. Ken Cotter, St. Joseph County Prosecutor, 10th floor, County City Building. Bill number 920 is a salary amendment and request for appropriation for our cybercrimes unit. We received a grant from the federal government to hire another cybercrime analyst and assistant director. There would be no county funds that would be expended. The grant actually pays not only the salary for that investigator, but also all of the fringe, and I would respectfully request the council approve.
Any questions for Mr. Cotter, for council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 920. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 920. Do I hear a motion?
(Inaudible).
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 920 was made by Councilman Nolan and seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Let the record show that Bill number 9-20 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number 10-20.
(Inaudible) amending ordinance 80-19, the same being of ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2020.
Mr. Krasinski, can I make a report, please, sir?
Mr. Morton, this comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Cotter?
Thank you. Ken Cotter, prosecutor, St. Joseph County, 10th floor. This is a request to amend and also appropriate funds that have been allocated because of a stop grant that we have received, and frankly, this is the same stop grant, the same amounts, that we have had for at least the last three years, I think longer, but I didn't go back that far. It would allow us to help supplement payment for deputy prosecutor, paralegals, and victim advocates, total of eight people. It doesn't supply their whole salary, but a good portion of it, for a total of over $173,000.
Any questions from council for Mr. Cotter? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 1020. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 1020. Do I hear a motion to pass or deny?
(Inaudible).
Second. Motion to pass. Bill number 1020 was made by Councilwoman Hess, the seconded by Councilman Anna Ricky. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Will it pass?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 10-20 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our January 28th, 2020 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Quickly, please read Bill number 8-20.
(Inaudible) transferring monies for the purposes here specified for the sub-partments here on listed of the St. Joseph County Government.
Do we have a motion on Bill number 820?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nolan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, with the exception of letter E, and on the memo there that we all received, the letter E, it would be exhibit D, which is specifically the $230,000 for the willing of paving at the police post. I'd like to pull that out and put the intention that that would be part of the highway paving course, not too distant.
Do I hear a second on that motion to pass Bill number 820, with the exception of letter E, exhibit D?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. Now, I will take a vote on that motion, not a voice vote, but one by one, correct, Mr. (inaudible).
You just approved the amendment.
Okay.
Now you can vote on the passage of the bill as amended.
Okay. So may I have a motion to pass both, Ms. 820, with exception of item E?
Seven.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Let the record show that Bill number 820 was seconded by a vote of eight to zero. Next, we have land use. Quickly, please read Bill number 104-19.
(Inaudible) amending supplemental, scheduled five, and fees for the St. Joseph County Health Department. (Inaudible).
Sir. I'm trying to look.
This request is to amend the fee schedule that was already approved. The, we get Freedom of Information requests in, and we'd like to start charging for those, and this request is to charge for $5 per parcel.
Okay. Under, I'm sorry, under Bill 220, can I make a report, please, Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. President, this comes to the favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any members of council who have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 220. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill number 220. Do I hear a motion?
(Inaudible).
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number 220 was made by Councilman Nolan and seconded by Councilman Anna Ricky. Any further comments on Bill number 220 from council? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Let the record show that Bill number 2-20 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number 3-1.
(Inaudible) St. Joseph County Council, making the St. Joseph County Prosecutor's Office utilize diversion funds allocated to it. Petitioner, prosecutor's office.
Mr. Krasinski, can I make a report, please?
Mr. Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Ken Cotter, prosecutor, 10th floor, County City Building. The short of it is, we have a diversion program in St. Joseph County, just as every other county in the state of Indiana has. State statute requires that before any of the funds collected in the diversion program can be allocated, it has to have an enabling ordinance from the county fiscal body. That allows me to frankly utilize those funds for various purposes. We anticipate expending a substantial amount of funds to purchase a software program for our special victims unit, fact unit, and homicide unit. Before doing so, I wanted to ensure that it complied with the enabling ordinance. Couldn't find one. Statute requires that there be one before any funds from the pretrial diversion program be expended. I'm sure that there was one a long time ago, and it didn't get converted, but regardless, I'd like to ensure that we follow state statute. Therefore, I'm asking this body to enact an enabling ordinance, allowing us to expend the funds pursuant to law. I laid out literally, word for word, what the statute authorizes us to do, and I'm not asking for anything more than that. I'd ask for a favorable, favorable vote.
Mr. Cotter? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 320. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill number 320.
Mr. President?
We need to...
Yeah, we need to amend it, yeah. We added section 3, if you recall. That's the one that, it's the suggestion of Mr. Tanzarek to make sure that if there wasn't other ordinance out there, it's been rescinded now. And this would be superseded, right? So we should amend it before it's passed.
Motion to amend that we add the amendment that this ordinance will supersede the other ordinance that may have been passed. Do I hear a second on that motion to amend?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is amended. May I have a motion on Bill number 20, if 320 has amended?
Approval.
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 320 as amended, was made by Councilman Nolan and was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 320 as amended? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Let the record show that Bill number 3-20, as amended, was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number 10419.
(Inaudible) amending supplemental, Title 15, land use, chapter 154, planning of the St. Joseph County has amended. The property located at 53000 Generations Drive, from B6's District 2, R2 Residential District. Petitioner, Gap Holding LLC.
Mr. Nolan, can I make a report, please?
Mr. President, Bill number 104-19 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before I get started, since this is my last meeting, I just want to say thank you guys for having the opportunity to serve for you and getting some great changes with our ordinance, so thank you for that. But yeah, Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, 11th floor of this building. The petitioners are requesting a zone change from the B Business District to R2 Residential District for the area outlined in red on your screen. To the east are single-family homes, zone our single-family. To the north is the toll road. To the west is ABC 57, Zone I Industrial. To the south, to the southwest, there's a senior living facilities, zone our single-family. And to the southeast are some businesses, Zone B Business District. Here is a view of the site. It's currently heavily wooded. There's an overview to give you an idea of how wooded it is. The site plan shows the construction of a multifamily building consisting of 122 units. Adequate off-street bicycle and vehicle parking is provided with some garage spaces. I know it states that the landscaping will comply with the zoning ordinance and will be addressed during the plan review process. Here is that elevation view that I was provided, that you requested at the committee meeting. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area plan commission.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Petitioner?
My name is Beth Earnett, and I represent Clover Development. We are a senior housing developer. We are based in Williamsville, New York. We have been doing senior housing for over 30 years. We are the land developer, the construction, and the owner of the building. We have never flipped a building. We will maintain ownership and management of this building. We provide market rate, senior living options. This building will be limited to 55 and older. We will have onsite management, we'll have onsite maintenance as well. We will not be opening up the property to the single family, which was discussed pretty thoroughly at the area plan commission, that the boundary ends. There is an easement that we will not cross. Our only access will be from Generations Drive. We will have detention in that front corner. Our folks generally stay with us for about 12 years. We are independent. We provide no hospitalization services, no medical services. We do not provide meals. Our apartments have full kitchens and laundry facility in each unit. We're the first step out of a single family. We are, we consider ourselves to be affordable, though we are not subsidized or HUD-based. Gladly answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Tanzarek?
Ms. Earnett, in our committee meeting, I asked you a question, and you confirmed for me and made it, made me feel better. I understand your pond is going to be a dry pond. You said generally speaking, less of a water event. Would you restate what your commitment is to what, how you would secure that pond on board?
Pardon me. Yeah, the pond, the pond will be, it'll be primarily shallow. We will have fencing around the pond for everyone's safety, and it will be dry at all times except for water events.
Thank you. What's the square footage of the building?
Oh.
Roughly?
Roughly about 132,000 square feet.
I'm certain that will be, based on the occupancy, it will be fire sprinkled and a large building.
The building is fully sprinkled. It does have an access road all around. We have submitted these plans to fire for review. We are just as concerned about that safety aspect as you are.
Thank you.
Any other questions for council for the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 10419. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 10419. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
(Inaudible).
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number 10419 was made by Councilman Nolan and was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on 10419? Hearing none, quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzarek?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Let the record show that Bill number 10419 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number 10419.
Just want to thank you. Thank you, and we look forward to being part of your community.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Bill number 120, (inaudible) amending supplemental, Title 15, land use, chapter 154, planning of the St. Joseph County has amended. The property located at 61203 State Road 931, from our single-family District 2, C Commercial single-family district two, C commercial district, petitioner RG Homes LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee, committee report, please.
President, bill number one dash twenty comes with a complete consultation with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, eleventh floor of this building. The petitioners are requesting to rezone the property from our single-family district, C commercial district, for that area outlined in red on your screen. To the north are single-family homes, zone our single-family district. To the northeast, that little portion in South Bend there, is an office building that is zone C commercial in the city of South Bend. To the east, across State Road nine thirty-one, are single-family homes, zoned suburban neighborhood one, and businesses zoned C commercial in the city of South Bend as well. To the south are single-family homes, zone our single-family district. And to the west, you have US thirty-one. Onsite currently is a single-family home that you can see in the back portion of the property there, and has a detached garage. There's an informal parking area here that serves that office that's to the north, in the northeast corner of the property. The site plan shows the residence and accessory building will remain. Five cell storage buildings will be added to the site that provided landscaping exceeds the minimum that is required. Adequate off-street parking is provided. And this site will have to meet all the architectural requirements of the C commercial district. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area plan commission. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counsel, you require? Hearing now petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Dance from Dance Harder &amp; Associates, sixteen forty-three Commissary Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. As Jordan had said, what we're asking to do is change the zoning for this piece of property to C commercial to allow for cell storage facility along with a climate control building. What the owners would like to be able to do on this piece of property, there is an existing house. They would like to live in that house, and they're going to manage this entire facility. What we had told counsel at the committee meeting is that there would be five buildings that you see along the south portion of the property. Those would be the cell storage units, the building that is going to be attached to the single-family house that the owners will occupy. Those are, there was a barn there at one time. That's going to be rebuilt. That will house classic cars and antique cars. The building just to the west of that, and also just south of the existing house, that would be a storage building for RVs. What we did is, what Jordan had mentioned there in his staff report, is we've added additional extra landscaping along the perimeter of the site. What we have from drainage is we have a retention area that would be up against the bypass. One of the comments that counsel had for the layout of where we had the retention pond and where the pavement was to access those cell storage facilities, we will be putting a barrier between those so that any traffic that's going to the buildings, they couldn't slide off and go into that retention area. So we will have a sturdy barrier for that. What we've also done, just because of where we're at in the neighborhood, all the cell storage buildings that you see, besides being screened from the adjacent properties, the first building has actually moved back behind any of the houses that also front on nine thirty-one right there. And what we had planned to do, and we had mentioned to counsel, there is one driveway coming in, but then you see a separate driveway that goes down to the cell storage. The reason for that is, is we wanted to separate those out. There'll be additional screening along the front of the cell storage area so that even as you drive by on nine thirty-one, you would not even see those buildings. We're trying to make this part of that particular area and do the best we could to screen that facility. This will be hooked up to water and sewer. Water and sewer is available along nine thirty-one, and I think there was a comment from the health department that wanted to make sure that we'd be hooking that up. So both the storage facility and the existing home will be connected to city water and city sewer. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from counsel? Mr. Dance? Mr. Nolan?
Just a curiosity, I guess. So the existing home is not currently in the works?
No, it's not, but it will be connected.
Any other questions for counsel?
Thank you.
We now open a public hearing on bill one dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now a closing public hearing on bill one twenty. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one twenty was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this film? Hearing now quickly, please take the roll. Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzright?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Yes.
Let's make sure that bill number one dash twenty was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, bill number four dash twenty.
An ordinance amending a supplementing title fifteen land uses chapter one fifty-four planning is only the San Jose County has amended through dot sections one five four dot five one one through one five four dot five one four. Solar energy systems and men, sections one five four dot zero seven zero, accessory uses, building and structures, one five four dot five oh five through one five four dot five oh six. Special regulations for wind energy conversion systems, one five four dot three six three six three six. Definitions and amended permitted uses in the following sections, all in title fifteen. Let me restate, all in title fifteen land usage. One five four dot zero nine one, one five four dot one oh six, one five four dot one two one, one five four dot one two six, one five four dot one one, one five four dot one oh six six, one five four dot one eight one, one five four dot two one one, and one five four two seven six. Please read the next.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number one, the whole council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, thank you. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, eleventh floor of this building. What I handed out to you was to address Mr. Katianzright's concerns from the committee meeting. We felt that this was a better route, so basically I just reached out to every fire district that I could, except for the ones open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They were hard to get a hold of. But I reached out to them, made sure that they were okay with responding to a fire in the case of solar, at a solar energy facility. And I also sent along to them a free online training course that they can use to train for this. So hopefully that, can I ask if that addresses your concerns regarding the fire response, Mr. Katianzright? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, okay. So we're proposing an ordinance to amend chapter one fifty-four to permit and establish regulations for solar energy systems. Currently, the San Joseph County zoning ordinance doesn't directly address solar energy systems or SES, which greatly limits its application within the county. Building-mounted SES and accessory use ground-mounted SES is only permitted as an interpretation by the zoning administrator to do a standalone ground-mounted SES project. A rezoning to the I industrial district would be required. In 2018, the county commissioners issued a statement with the goal that the county would take steps to achieve a high ranking in the Department of Energy's Soul Smart Program, which nationally ranks municipalities and jurisdictions based on their solar friendliness. Because land use regulations are the major factor in how these projects come to be developed, the area plant commission has taken it upon themselves to achieve the goal of the county commissioners and allow San Joseph County to rank as one of the highest counties in the nation in the Soul Smart Program. The major changes of this ordinance are as follows. We establish solar energy as a permitted accessory use and does not include their size in max, in the maximum allowed size for accessory structures, allowing systems that meet the needs of the associated use. We renamed the special regulations for wind energy, which this ordinance, this section is being tacked on the end. We're renaming that renewable energy systems. Classifications are as follows. An SES is either building or ground-mounted. Building is either facade or roof-mounted. Ground is either large or small scale. Small scale is forty thousand square feet or less. Large is greater than forty thousand. Building-mounted is established as a permitted accessory use in all districts. Provisions are established to allow facade and roof-mounted to project into the setback or exceed the maximum height, allowing them to be installed on buildings that are already at that limitation. Small-scale ground-mounted is a permitted primary accessory use in all districts. Large-scale ground-mounted is permitted use in the A agricultural district, I district, U district, and especially use in all other districts. Ground-mounted will have a maximum height of twenty-two feet. They will have to meet all the required setbacks, the same as the building. Ground-mounted SES is exempt from all required landscaping, except for a new landscaping requirement of two square feet of native grass and wildflower planting for every one square foot of panels. This is intended to make these projects harmonious to the agricultural uses by promoting pollinators, preventing erosion, restoring soil nutrients, and making them aesthetically pleasing. And then we've added decommissioning provisions as well. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area plant commission. This ordinance will substantially make solar development easier, but at the same time be done in a manner that is harmonious with the uses, especially the agricultural uses of San Joseph County. The regulations found in this ordinance are best practices that recognize the unique need of solar energy projects and establish uses to allow the essential form of renewable energy. This ordinance will allow San Joseph County to achieve gold status, the highest rank in the Soul Smart Program, which will show solar developers across the country that San Joseph County is one of the best places in the nation to develop solar projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Kenzright?
Thank you. Jordan, great work on this, and just to get off this, we do next. Quick question to you, just how much of that, this will get us to this new level and install it would be happy to bug this. Is there a way that they'll be notified? Is there some sort of publication or how?
Yeah, so Leah Thill, the woman from MACOG who worked on this ordinance with me really closely, she will actually apply if you choose to pass this tonight, tomorrow, and then we'll just get emailed, notified essentially, and we'll get a really cool plaque that's like a little mini solar panel with like gold on it, yeah. So, yeah, we'll be notified by email shortly, hopefully.
And that's a publication or something that, that these installers do?
I'm not sure exactly the full parameters of like the program, but Leah is here, so I'm sure she could explain it when we open it for public hearings.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions for counsel? Hearing now, open a public hearing on bill number four twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Good evening. Deborah Durell, two one six seven seven Otten Road. I want to very strongly speak in favor of this bill. This is the kind of forward-thinking, problem-solving, and compromise that we're looking for from the county that this area is doing more and more of. This benefits not only the solar energy field and energy conservation in this area, but also it benefits the preservation of farmland. As we are developing on farmland, one of the concerns, even with solar panels, is what is happening to the soil underneath. It also protects the pollinators, which of course are under great threat from all angles right now. So, we're very, I'm very excited about this, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi.
Record, you have three minutes to address the topic.
I'm Leah Thill. I'm the environmental planner with the Michiana Area Council of Governments with offices on the eleventh floor of this building. And I just wanted to provide a few comments to reiterate what Jordan had said. MACOG assisted the county in reviewing best practices to help develop this ordinance, and we feel that it definitely provides clarity that will be much appreciated both by residents, businesses, and installers in knowing what's permitted and the process, particularly for primary use projects, as well as consistency as staff change. Further, MACOG did produce a technical guide on the establishment and maintenance of pollinator-friendly solar projects, and we're working with Purdue University actually to take that guide and publish it statewide. And so I do think that San Joseph County will be recognized as a leader, definitely in the state, maybe in the Midwest, following only Minnesota, a couple counties there that have really been doing these projects in the last few years. So I think it'll be of great interest to the Department of Energy, and there is some interest on publishing some stories that would have a national audience when this is passed. And it's particularly forward-thinking in terms of agricultural sensitivities, improving the soil, making projects more reversible back into farmland at the end of the life of the projects. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bill number four twenty? Hearing now a closing public hearing on bill four twenty. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number four twenty was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on four twenty? Hearing now quickly, please take the roll.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzright?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Let's make sure that bill number four dash twenty was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Quickly, please read the next bill, bill number six dash twenty.
An ordinance amending a supplementing title fifteen land uses chapter one fifty-four planning is only the San Jose County has amended through dot sections one five four dot five two zero through one five four dot five two two. Agritourism and men, sections one five four dot zero nine one, permitted uses in the A agricultural district and section one five four dot one oh six, permitted uses in the R single-family district, petitioner area plant commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
President, bill number six dash twenty comes with a complete consultation with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, thank you. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, eleventh floor of this building. We are proposing an ordinance amendment to permit established regulations for agritourism uses. San Joseph County has seen a lot of pressure in the last few years to allow for uses in the agricultural districts such as event spaces, wedding barns, U-PIC operations, farmers' markets, and many other uses, which collectively falls into what is termed agritourism. Our current ordinance doesn't allow these kind of uses without rezoning to C commercial or creating your own planned unit development. These cumbersome solutions deteriorate the character established in the A agricultural district. Agritourism can provide multiple benefits to farmers, such as increased and diversified income, educational opportunities for the public, and increased respect for agriculture. Because of these benefits and the increased pressure from the market, our ordinance must adapt to allow for the implementation of these agritourism uses in a way that benefits the agricultural uses while also protecting the character established in San Joseph County. The major changes are as follows. Roadside stand regulations are updated, removing the maximum size of the stand and minimum parking area size. A provision prohibiting on-street parking is added to make that clear. Agritourism is a new section that establishes an intent to guide future regulations and provides a list of example uses. The zoning administrator will have the authority to interpret other agritourism uses that are not listed to help protect the longevity and adaptability of this section. Agritourism uses are only permitted when they are accessory to an established agricultural use. Agritourism, when they are accessory to an ag use, is permitted outright in the A agricultural district and requires a special use in our single-family districts. Landscaping is only required in the front yard, so along the streets, and screening portable bathrooms if they provide those. Parking and drives are not required to be paved or striped, but they will have to meet the minimum number of spaces in like ADA spaces, stuff like that. Again, we added, on-street parking is prohibited for these kind of uses, and we've established hours of operation from seven AM to twelve AM. This will apply to everything except for lodging, so if they have like a bed and breakfast, that obviously will be open for people to sleep. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area plant commission. This ordinance will allow for unique use that complements and enhances the agricultural character of San Joseph County. These regulations are intended to complement and preserve agricultural uses in the county, provide opportunities for unique experiences that promote agriculture, and recognize the importance of agriculture in our economy. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for counsel? Hearing now, we'll open a public hearing on bill number six dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill?
Hello, my name is Steve Weiser, two six seven two five New Road in North Liberty, Indiana. In concept, I agree with what the planning and zoning is attempting to do with passing these regulations for agritourism. However, I do believe that the definition is a little bit too narrow in scope and somewhat subjective and needs to be slightly modified. The current proposal made to the council members today reflects that only farms active with planting and raising agricultural row crops are eligible for this, and also raising livestock. My wife and I are attempting to start up a wedding venue business on our property, and we have already been told by zoning that we do not qualify for the special variance and exception based on these rules. We currently live on twenty-nine acres of land. We currently live on twenty-nine acres of land. We have multiple historic barns on the property, livestock, including horses and ponies and offense pasture. Our property is currently zoned and taxed as agricultural and general farmland through the county assessor's office, so thus where our property, through the county itself, is called as farmland. We also have a variety of state codes, including woodlands as agricultural land in definition. My first point, that we're told that our horses do not qualify as livestock for a working farm, which would qualify us for this special approval. If you look up the definition of livestock in any encyclopedia, it clearly states that they're used for, raised for use or for pleasure, especially farm animals which are kept for use and profit. Examples also include horses in those definitions. We have used and trained horses and sold those for profit in the past, and so I believe we checked that box. My second point, that planning and zoning's definition of agricultural currently does not include forestry. There's a variety of state codes that include woodlands and agricultural land, including the United States Code Title VII, Agricultural Section fifteen eighteen, whose definition includes timber and forests. Forestry is listed as an agricultural crop and subject to ag exemptions on property taxes. I've actively corresponded with professors and executive directors and foresters through Purdue University, who have also supported that definition, that timber is indeed a crop that can be harvested and shared this information with the Area Plan Commission on January twenty-first. Subsequently, I did receive an email from Mr. Jordan on January twenty-third stating that no one is disputing that forestry isn't an agricultural use. Like we have said before, you have no established agricultural use and no forest management plan for continued harvesting. You need to establish your agricultural use, and then you can definitely do your wedding barn. So I received that, I said, on January twenty-third. Prior to that, I had worked pretty much with a few different individuals at Purdue, and they had suggested contacting the local county DNR officer for St. Joe County, which I did, to put together a forestry management plan. So I do have a couple copies of that available, if you are interested, that shows sustainable harvesting that would be done on our plan with a management process in place. But yet, when I shared that with the Area Plan Commission, they were, I was told this morning that we still would not be changing their current definition for agricultural to include forestry. In summary, I believe that we've checked the boxes for our farm for both the livestock and agricultural usage that would obtain that special approval needed to do a wedding venue business. Horses are clearly defined as livestock, and secondly, US codes along with state codes include woodlands as agricultural use. We have a clear plan established by a certified forester for harvesting and managing our standing timber. So I would respectfully ask the council members to recognize this today and make a recommendation to zoning planning to slightly modify their existing definition for agricultural to ensure these areas are clearly recognized and included resulted in our farm becoming eligible for the special use variance. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. So could you write your name down for the record?
Yes.
Right, right back to you. Thank you very much. Jordan or Larry, would you like to respond to those comments?
Evening. Larry Maliazi, Executive Director of the Plan Commission, offices on the eleventh floor of this building. So Mr. Weiser's correct, we've talked a lot back and forth over the past probably a few weeks, and the crux really comes down to the definition of agriculture that the county has. Obviously, agriculture, when you go to a broader definition, as Mr. Weiser said, encompasses a lot more uses than our definition, but our definition is, you know, goes back to the day where specifically the council at that time decided that those few uses identified do not include what he is currently doing or wants to do on his property and include that in agriculture. So our current definition as farming, dairying, pasturage, apiculture, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, truck gardening, and animal husbandry. Notice that, you know, forestry is not included in that definition as farming, and neither is anything to do with horses. Animal husbandry does not include horses. Animal husbandry essentially are the raisin of animals for food production, eggs, meat, pork, those kinds of things. So, that's kind of the crux of the matter where Mr. Weiser's coming from. So the next step is really the overall policy for the county, and I guess my opinion is that the type of property that Mr. Weiser has, which is heavily wooded, is really, you can find those properties all over the agricultural district. And I believe, in my opinion, opening up those, all those additional properties to the potential event center, wedding barn, is, I don't think in the best interest of the county from a land use perspective. And that's where I would, that's why I've made the interpretation kind of ahead of time, that the current definition of agriculture would not allow his use under the agritourism definition. Questions?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Carrick?
Thank you. You said apiculture, is that bees?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, in this definition, is there a minimum area that would be defined as farming? I mean, if you planted forty square feet of soybeans, is that farming?
Well, I mean, the minimum lot size in the agricultural district is twenty acres.
That's a lot size, but how much of that would have to be farmed in one of the?
We don't, we don't address that in the ordinance.
I can answer that really quick. So because it's an accessory use, this ag agritourism, by definition as an accessory use, it would have to be smaller than the ag use. So say you had, you know, like a twelve hundred square foot, like event space, you know, you'd have to have twelve hundred and one square feet of plants, really. It has to be subordinate to, in size to the agricultural.
And maybe you brought it to me high, I mean, twelve hundred square foot of field.
That depends on what's in the field, yeah.
I mean, a good example is St. Joe Farms, if you're familiar out there in Harris Township. St. Joe Farms came through under a planned unit development for, well, they're much more than a wedding center. They have soccer and they have other things there. I mean, the footprint of the, the event center, I guess, is, is much smaller than the larger footprint of the overall farm. So that makes it an accessory use, okay? So this would be an example where if this passes, St. Joe Farms could essentially rezone out of the PUD, back to agriculture, and they would qualify under here, okay? Because again, it's a huge farming operation, and the footprint is an accessory use, which is in square footage, you know, below the total square footage of the farm. The other wedding venue in the county that I know of is out by New Carlisle, off of Chicago Trail, I think, if I recall correctly. Again, that's on a, on a large farm, actively farmed, and they use, and the people live there, and they use the, a barn on the property for wedding events, and that's also zoned PUD. They could zone out of the PUD and qualify because again, it's an active farm that produces crops, and the uses, you know, the footprint of the use is below the total footprint of the farm operation. That's kind of a long answer to what you're asking, because I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, you answered. I guess, and maybe my fault to that, in some ways, especially with the conversation around how difficult it is for smaller farmers.
Right.
I understood the benefit of this change, you know, changing this ordinance was to also kind of add some value to the smaller farmers.
Correct.
You got to put the smallest farmers as well.
Right, right. I mean, in Mr. Weiser's case, I mean, his property, the majority of it is wooded, okay? And he's developed his, his management plan, okay? And again, from the state standpoint, the federal standpoint, that may be considered farming or farm use, but from our definition, it's not and never has been. It wasn't anticipated back in the seventies that this would be a type of use that fits in with, with, with the farm, farming community at that time. So, and again, there's, there's literally probably hundreds of properties throughout the ag area that are comparable to Mr. Weiser's, and potentially, if we add that, you know, I'm not saying you can have hundreds of wedding venues, but, you know, the spread of that kind of commercial activity could be more than it is now. And, you know, in my view, you know, how much intrusion is that? So it's a policy question. Again, it's, you know.
Mr. Root?
Yeah, Larry, when I think of agritourism, I'm thinking of things like the corn maze and the pumpkin patch.
Right.
I'm just thinking, to me, that's not the wedding venues, and in the last couple of years, we've seen, I mean, a recent phenomenon of wedding, alternative wedding venues, venue chips exploding, all kinds of different types of buildings being used.
Right.
And so I think we're trying to hold something back that quite frankly, the culture's pushing on here. And I, do we have any zoning regulations outside of this specifically targeted to wedding venues? It may be time for the county to have a policy just on wedding venues, and then you can control some regulations and have some restrictions on what you want to see, and it may cut down on the hundreds of possible sites, but I, but I think going forward, having wedding venues in the county seems to be something that's just going to grow and grow.
Well, again, that's, that's what this ordinance tries to address, is to restrict it to true farms, okay, that actually grow crops or raise animals for, for food and food production, okay?
That's not what you're saying, Mr. Root.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that, I understand that for the list you've given for this particular ordinance, I'm thinking that in this particular case, this kind of, to me, stands outside of that.
Okay.
Maybe needs its own ordinance.
Oh, needs its own ordinance, okay.
That would be specifically applied to wedding venues in agricultural districts.
Right. Well, again, they could apply for a planned unit development.
That was, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, yeah, or commercial, right? Yeah, or commercial, or, okay, so, so the county has passed two of those, all right? And I believe the staff has backed those. And, I mean, the, the, the PUD gives the council a lot more oversight, okay, because we can restrict where the parking is, we can restrict the size of the parking, we can add landscaping or buffering if there's, you know, non-farm uses next to, to that. We can put restrictions on, potential restrictions on, you know, on the, on the event times.
Mr. Carrick? So Larry, Mr. Maliazi, in your description, you said agriculture is defined as something twenty acres or greater.
Well, that's for lot size purposes. You need at least twenty acres for, for agricultural type uses. And mostly, that's geared towards, towards a home. Okay, obviously, you can farm on five acres, ten acres, hundred acres.
The reason why I'm asking, he says he sits on twenty-nine acres, raises horses, which, I don't know on the definition of animal husbandry, if that qualifies or not. I'm looking here online, it looks like mine, but I can think of there's some smaller ten acre venues and a five acre venue in our county that currently I would consider agritourism. One is a, probably a ten acre venue that has wine tasting.
Yes. That's on PUD.
That's on Adams, isn't it?
That's on Adams Road.
Yeah, that's, that's, oh, Brick Road, yeah, that's a PUD.
That's a PUD, planned unit development. Yep, they went through the process to have a PUD, and they were approved.
So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't qualify then because they're?
For, they could qualify as a PUD if they want to file for a PUD.
Agritourism.
Well, it wouldn't be adding the agritourism, it'd just be a planned unit development, it's a straight zoning.
And the other one thing that was, out near New Carlisle, it's called Field of Base,
it's probably on five acres, but they sell flowers, it's a beautiful piece of property, but it's small, and I consider that agritourism. People rather just observe the flowers and the bees, it's beautiful.
Yes, that would qualify. I'm Ryan Fellows, Senior Planner with the Area Plan Commission, with the offices on the eleventh floor as well. I wanted to note that I did contact all the experts referenced by, by, by the gentleman here, and each of them, I kind of asked about, okay, how does this agritourism look like? And I tried to ask, you know, is there any examples? And we all kind of came up with Christmas tree farms, in addition to all the standard, you know, pumpkins and picky apples and all that stuff. But, you know, unless you're talking about like maple syrup or something, there's, unless you have some agricultural product, you're not really engendering an experience, that you're connecting people with agriculture. The impetus behind this bill is to create a, a avenue for farmers to have a little bit of extra income, to help make it easier to maintain agricultural property, so that you can have it be profitable as a farmer. And when you take that intention and you set it aside and say, well, if we're growing trees or if we have horses, then we have enough where we're going to have kind of a smokescreen cover of saying it's, it's agritourism, when in reality, it's just a wedding venue. And that's where it should be zoned commercial if it's meant to be. If you're going to have something that's connecting people with the land and an educational experience, then that's what this is going towards, and that's what the comprehensive plan goals are stated, to try to maintain agricultural property, and, and we feel that that's what this is for. But if you try to look for an example of a timber or forestry farm as for agritourism, I couldn't find any, and the experts the gentleman pointed me to couldn't reference any.
Can I, can I expand on Mr. Root's question there? So, we think this is a good first step. The reason why these, these two are together is just to emphasize that relationship with the agriculture that's being produced. And they both have very similar concerns regarding, so like noise, and that's what the hours of operation are intended to mitigate. Agritourism uses have that concern, because usually it's surrounded by, you know, residential or farmland, but event spaces also have that as well. The other concern, really with the, both of those things, is just the, the parking, which they will have to provide enough parking, and it's just this infiltration almost of a commercial use in this established agricultural or residential, like, district. So because of this pressure, we think it's a good first step, because this mitigates both, they both have the same things, and this ordinance is intended to mitigate both of those, all those things regarding both of those uses.
Yeah, and I think I agree with you. I think what I'm trying, and I, what I, I think you're making my point, is that the wedding venue is completely almost stand outside of this ordinance, and that's why I, I think it would be well to be proactive and get ahead of that, because I think we're going to see more and more wedding, particularly wedding venues. Like, frankly, what do we do with South Paul Farms, south of Michawaka? How was that one?
I don't know that one.
I don't remember what that's zoned, frankly.
Is that in the county?
Yeah, it's in the county.
You know, in agricultural, I mean.
Yeah, well, that starts, that started as a house.
Right.
Mansion, type of thing, and.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that is. I, I need to get, I'll have to get back with you on that one, but I'm not sure it's zoned other than.
And I'm hearing the solution though from the gentleman, and that's that he may be able to apply for a PUD zoning, and then he would be eligible to do what he wanted to do.
Well, if it passes, sure.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Had that been discussed as an option?
I believe I'd no, mentioned that, yeah. I mentioned a lot of things, I don't remember enough that was one of the options, but.
But I do have concerns that, again, I'm not sure the wedding venue matches a PDU, PUD perfectly either, and so I wonder if.
Right. It's, it's a better, yeah, it's a better zoning than commercial. It's kind of a tongue-in-cheek zoning. We'd, we'd have to, because the PUD essentially can't address single use, but he technically has more than a single use. I mean, he's got, he's raising horses, trains horses, he has a managed farm area, I'm sorry, a managed forestry area.
Residential.
And residential, so, but again, I think going through the PD gives the council, you know, at least a look at it, so that, you know, we don't have two or three of these in a row, which is potential, okay? We can look at the traffic a little bit more closely and septic issues more closely, too.
And then, like I said, is, you know, this is our first stab at this, and there's not a lot of good examples right now to address these kind of uses coming into the agricultural agricultural district because they are, it's pretty new. Um, and yeah, you know, we're always open, you know, we've presented tons of changes to you and we're always open, you know, if we see an issue coming from, you know, if we see a lot more issues that need to be addressed from the wedding venues that don't happen with the other kind of uses, you know, we, you know, we'll adapt, we will adapt to this. This is just a first try, and this will be a solution for a lot of people, um, and we will, you know, keep our eye on it and adapt it as necessary.
I mean, I, I don't think we'll see a lot of these, frankly, to be really honest with you, uh, but, but I think that's enough of a venue that, um, the PUD is probably the better way to go at this point.
Any other comments, counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing ended. I conclude the public hearing on Bill six dash 20. Motion.
With approval, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number six dash 20, made by Councilman Nolan, seconded by Councilman Kanserak. Any further comments from any council member in regard to Bill six dash 20? Harry, now, could we please take the roll?
Morning.
No.
Mr. Tanserak.
Yes.
Mr. Kretzky.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Kresinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Thank you, I represent Bill number six twenty, six dash twenty was passed by vote of seven to one. Quickly, please read the next bill, Bill number seven dash one.
Bill seven dash twenty, in order to amend and supplement Title 15 land usage, Chapter 154, planning and certain essential conditions amended to sections 154 dot zero seven, trailer, mobile homes and tents, 154 dot zero five seven, reconstruction, remodeling or enlargement of illegally established non-performing single-family dwelling or two-family dwelling, 154 dot zero seven zero and 154 dot zero seven one, general regulations, 154 dot four two one, required bicycle parking, 154 dot six one five, authority, 154 dot six three six, definitions and permitted uses in the following sections, all in Title 15, land usage, 154 zero nine one, 154 one oh six, 154 one two one, 154 one three six, 154 one five one, 154 one six six, 154 one eight one, 154 two one one, and adopt section 154 zero seven nine, recreational vehicles, trailers, mobile homes and tents, petitioner of area plan.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number seven dash twenty goes to the council in favor of the recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Mr.?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Jordan White, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, 11th floor of this building. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance is to fix, uh, organizational problems, um, and update language to meet the intent of the zoning ordinance and the goals of the comprehensive plan. Uh, this ordinance also revises regulations to make them compliant with Indiana state law. Um, these changes are important, uh, to make our zoning ordinance clear for the public and meet the intent of how these regulations were actually meant to be applied. Uh, the major changes are as follows. Um, we've added accessory buildings, um, to the remodeling and reconstruction of legally established single-family and two-family dwellings. Um, this just wasn't clear before that if your house burnt down and the garage, um, if you could build the garage back or not, uh, because it just mentioned the primary structure, um, so the accessory building will now be covered. Um, accessory uses, buildings or structures are now allowed on a lot, uh, without a primary structure on it, when it's a lot that, which abuts the associated use and is under the same ownership. Um, so this will allow for you to put, say, a shed on the parcel that you own right next year's without combining it in a subdivision process, um, which will make that significantly easier for people. Um, accessory building sizes for lots over five acres, um, are changed from unlimited to two times the square footage of the ground floor of the primary structure. Um, this is only for residential uses, agricultural uses, um, would still be allowed unlimited accessory building sizes, um, which was the intent of that, uh, regulation. Um, trailers, mobile homes and tents, um, is moved into the general regulations, um, section, um, and renamed recreational vehicles, trailers, mobile homes and tents. Uh, the temporary uses in that section are incorporated in, into the temporary use section. Um, language is changed to allow any type of temporary dwelling. Uh, currently, you can only have a mobile home as a temporary dwelling. Um, but this will allow for, like, say, like a tiny home or something like that to be used as a temporary dwelling if you want something more permanent. Um, we've added parks, um, as a primary use or special use in all districts. Um, short-term rentals, uh, replaces bed and breakfast. Um, they're allowed in all districts, uh, when owner occu, when it's owner occupied. Um, this is a requirement of Indiana state law. Um, highway maintenance shops and yards are added to the A agricultural district. Um, we've added vet clinics, um, to all of the office and commercial districts. Currently, it's only allowed in A and I. Um, let's see, uh, garages and parking, uh, for vehicles over one and a half ton. Um, capacity is a special use in the C commercial district. This will allow for, like, the repair of, say, like a, like a tractor trailer, uh, as a special use. Uh, convention halls and meeting halls, um, is added as a primary use in the I district. Um, we changed the language for the required bicycle parking and will be based on the number of spaces you provide, not, uh, required, uh, because the, some, some uses we have started to not require, um, parking at all, so they won't have to provide any bicycle parking. We've added historic preservation, uh, the authority to enforce the zoning ordinance since they have their own, uh, little section in our, in our ordinance. Um, we've simplified some definitions, removed duplicates and unused ones. Um, building height is now measured from grade instead of curb level. Um, this change is necessary, um, to, uh, apply the maximum building height as intended. Um, grade is now measured from the average finished surface, five feet around the building. Currently, there's no limit, so it's hard to know what that average, um, is and how to calculate it. Um, definitions for owner occupied and short-term rentals are added from that Indiana state law I mentioned earlier. Um, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, some councils? Thank you. We're now open to public hearing on Bill seven dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Harry, now, I close the public hearing on seven twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Looking for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill seven dash twenty, made by Councilman Kresinski, seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussions on seven dash twenty? Mr. Tanserak?
Mr. Moore.
Uh, unrelated to this bill, but related to Jordan White, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize Jordan and his contributions to our county. Appreciate him for his marathon, his last couple of months of putting these changes to the zoning ordinance together. I want to congratulate him on his future endeavors and thanking for his citizens of the San Diego County.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kretzky?
I'd like to echo that. And Jordan, your dedication to the area plan was greatly appreciated. Um, I know when I called on you, you were very responsively getting back to me, some of the answers I liked, some I didn't, but you did get back to me. So one thing I know for sure, our committee meetings will be a little shorter. But, uh, good luck in your, your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Mr. Hess?
I would also like, just the last committee meeting was a little long, but for the most part, yes, Jordan, I want to commend you for all the, the enthusiasm and energy you've brought to the Area Plan Commission and the forward-thinking ideas and updating the ordinances that we have, and we will miss you long after the meetings and all, so good luck.
Any other comments, some council?
One more.
Mr. Nolan?
Thanks again for all your hard work. Uh, I guess when I get tabled, you know what, three out of four, you can all start. I just cared about the first one, isn't it?
Just a technical difference.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, some council?
Here now, quickly, please, thank you all.
Thank you, Jordan, for all your hard work, appreciate you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Um, Mr. Tanserak.
Yes.
Mr. Ken Rettke.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Kresinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
More security, big zero.
Let's represent that Bill number seven dash twenty was passed by vote of eight to zero, that concludes the public hearing. For this evening, next on the agenda is unfinished, unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, to items not on tonight's agenda.
Ralph, make sure they sign in.
Please sign in, uh, when you come up to speak. We have two minutes to adjust the council.
I want to thank the county council for engaging on some of the other boards and commissions, and thank you for the new appointments to those commissions. I also want to congratulate Bobby Kresinski for his receiving the Sagamore of the Wabash Award, which is quite, um, deserved. And, um, I want to speak about the redevelopment commission and some of the work that's happening on the IEC. Um, we had a meeting this morning and I made some of these statements there. Um, the residents of St. Joseph County are now hearing repeatedly that the IEC is not a new idea, that it is a continuation of the long history of development of farmland, on farmland, near Bendix Woods County Park and the Kankakee Aquifer, building on several cycles, starting in the 1920s with Studebaker and Singer. Let's be clear, this history does not a tradition make. The IEC's team's attempt to make an old idea sound better is the same old argument at heart, any jobs, anywhere, for any cost. It seems the hard work and many hours using TIF dollars for marketing this big idea is aimed primarily to manage the public outcry and defeat legislation protecting farmland, since the vision and concepts differ liter, literal, little, from a century ago. Any jobs at any cost are no longer justifiable, and more large format industry is a thing of the past. So with all due respect for the IECT members working long and hard, it's not personal, but this job was misconceived from the beginning. All the talent in the world cannot make this a good fit today. It's time to really make history, to increase and maintain our existing farmland, we heard some good steps tonight, wetlands, green spaces and air, with some spending and legislation that assists the community as a whole. For instance, we are still waiting on the updated 2002 comprehensive land use plan. As I was told recently by one St. Joe County official up for reelection, there is lots of farmland, you can go somewhere else and farm. So the undefined IEC with minimal jobs and huge costs already trumps the history of generations of farming, regardless of the current challenges to our citizens. We cannot give up any more land for a bad old idea, no matter how you spin it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Bob Humberger, 29987, Hurd Road, Olive Township, and my comment is just an objection about procedure here tonight. The gentleman spoke on, um, on, uh, about the wedding barn and he was complaining that the, uh, forestry was not included in ag business. I want to say I have a farm in St. Joe County and, uh, this, one of these gentlemen from the Area Plant Commission would not let me respond to the, to the, to the guy from the Area Plant Commission that gave the explanation of why. I was trying to respond to that and he wouldn't let me talk. I have a forestry area, I, it's about 10 acres and I have about, um, eight acres of paths through it. I don't plan to ever make a, uh, agr, um, tourism, agritourism out of it, but the fact that you would not allow forestry to be considered as an agribusiness, I think is wrong. Yeah, the, all the, um, forestry is, my forestry is planted in rows, it's a row crop, it does produce a crop, it may take 30 years to do it, but it is a continuous basis, uh, agribusiness. Thank you.
Sir, uh, unless I'm misunderstanding you, um, your, your time to speak would have been when I asked for any, anyone who's, wants to speak not in favor of the ordinance.
The first person to spoke about the wedding procedures...
The, the petition.
I didn't have any problem with that. The guy from the, the I, guy from the Area Plant Commission then spoke, and I did have objection to that.
And that's what I'm trying to explain to you. Our, our procedure is this, sir, when the petitioner comes up and makes, makes his case, and then there's a lot of remonstrance, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, when that petitioner has remonstrance, then he is able to come back and speak as the petitioner. I'll say it again, in your case, you should have gotten up when I asked for anybody that would be in opposition of the bill. That's our procedure.
I didn't have any opposition to the bill until that gentleman spoke. After he spoke, then I had opposition to it because he's the one that said...
But you're, but you're not the petitioner, sir. I'm just, I'm just telling you our procedure.
Fine. I'm just telling you my objections to it.
And I, and I respect that.
Good evening, county councilors. Um, I'm Judith Rublaski of 515 South Mead. Um, tonight I am speaking for myself and on behalf of all of us regular Kankakee Wetlands Organic Gardens volunteers listed in the CC to this message, which I also mailed to you just before I left home. Did each of you know about the cost of this radio marketing promoting the IEC? Do you know about the cost of this and where the origin of funds to pay for this marketing for something that no vote has been taken on? I suspect you don't know. No master plan for the IEC exists at this time. We suspect it is TIF funds that is ultimately paying for this. Our county system of dispensing TIF needs to change so that you, our elected officials, our representatives, have some oversight as to where our tax funds are spent. So this is spoken on behalf of not only myself, but my husband, James Rublaski, Cindy Wazorick, Rick Kramer, Kathleen Rojek and Larry Nicewonder, and they have their addresses on here. So, um, can you nod your head, yes, you did know about the cost for these radio marketing campaign for the...
Ma'am, I will, I will comment on that. Uh, I was, we were made aware, uh, through an email from a, a New Carlyle constituent and, um, today, actually. And, uh, I took the liberty to, uh, try to look into it and I did find out some facts and figures, well, not figures, but facts, uh, for the, for the advertising, but this was all today.
I, um, connected with, um, our treasurer, my crook, outside the room just before the county council, uh, meeting started, and his comment was, um, it was disingenuous to market the IEC since, and pay for it, like, he, he didn't suspect that you would know where the funds came from, and that it was rather disingenuous for that to be done, considering what a contentious issue that is. So, anyway.
Totally respect what you're saying.
Yeah.
Obviously, we were made aware today, and I looked into it and shared some of this information with.
Yeah, this is, um, it's not like it's a done deal, so why market it, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Countryman, I live at five two nine five nine Timothy Road, New Carlisle.
Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I am, I am speaking against the IEC. We do not want this in our community. In the January nineteenth, twenty twenty South Bend Tribune, the legal section had a notice of real property commissioner sale for St. Joe County. There were one thousand three hundred sixty-nine properties listed. We who have, we who are against this have paid our property taxes, and because of that, our voices should be the primary voice, voice heard in the making a decision of what does or does not belong in our community. The IEC does not belong in our community. The recent ads promoting no smokestacks doesn't bring us any comfort, as the shredder, known for its numerous fires, scrap falling off on the highway, explosions, loud noises, et cetera, doesn't have a smokestack, and we all know how that's gone, not good. Bill Shalial has admitted that there would be high-tech jobs, and those are usually automated, employing very few. That's another negative for our area. The area farmland is already and has been providing tax income to the county. Family farms provide jobs to Gavilon Granary, South Bend Ethanol, Zalls Elevator, and more. Those businesses provide jobs to full-time and part-time employees, and in return, those employees spend their money supporting already existing New Carlisle and other county businesses. That farmland is already providing jobs. It has been and will be a sure thing, because we all need food and other products made by, with corn and soybeans, and it's unlikely that they're, what they're trying to push into New Carlisle onto us will be a definite thing. That's not, there's nothing definite with that. Please don't change our quality of life. We chose to live away from industry, we chose to live near farm fields, and that's what we want, not an industrial zone. And in reading the reports from the St. Joe County site in reference to the aquifer, it talks about the different places, and this whole project should have been stopped, as far as I'm concerned, when the perilous water report found the land, depending on the area within the IEC zone as far as whether it was susceptible or highly susceptible to contamination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Oliver Davis, eighteen oh one Nass Street, and I'm here again to speak against the IEC. One of the things I wanted to say, for five years when I was on the area plan board, one of the key things that I wanted to make sure is that the plans were done in accordance with the neighborhood, and not the neighbors being caught by surprise on a lot of these different issues. I believe that we needed to have slowed this down, like has been said before, and when we have looked at that area, similar to what had happened, again, when it came down to Carr Cruncher, that was supposed to be over in my district, and we had to fight against that, and I have definitely had to look at how we are going to deal with our farmland. This is not just our area for just only the New Carlisle area, it's our area for all of us in St. Joe, because of how those farmers invest in our whole entire community. And when you look at that, that is something that we all, as a community, have to be a bar, a part of. So again, today, I rise up in opposition to that, and I hope that we could continue to delay those projects and come up with another idea.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Enders, maiden name Dudek. I understand that the state of Indiana is basically somewhat desperate for employment. Tearing up farmland does not qualify for it, and the reason I say this, because something I have received this week that was a summary done back in two thousand and eighteen, the Status of Working Families in Indiana. Indiana's jobs, employment, and labor force are headed toward a low-wage future. Seven in ten Hoosier jobs in two thousand and twenty-six are projected to be low-income for a family of three. That's just one thing. Okay, this is a whole sheet that summarizes everything. Basically, I understand, and from what I have been hearing, the state of Indiana is losing population really fast. Number one, number one reason, low-wage income. My opinion, too, is that the education system in this state sucks, because kids are not learning what I learned, granted, was many years ago, I will be seventy-three, but the education nowadays, kids don't know half of what I knew by the time I got into high school, and it's because we're going, going down and down, shifting school money out of the state, and then having it redirected back up here, and we get nothing. The teachers are leaving, they're scrambling for school bus drivers, and kids are leaving as soon as they graduate college, because there's no pay. I know of kids that went to school here, my mother, Washington High School, a gal, graduated, her aunt, who lives in Missouri, found out she wanted to go into nursing, she moved her to Missouri, got two years of training, and started out at forty-two thousand dollars. Now, that may sound like a lot, but bottom line, what is being paid in this state is starvation wages. All, that's why you have all these departments, you have unemployment, and on homeless people, I work for homeless shelters, and believe me, it is disgusting what some people have to do just to be able to keep a roof over their head and food in their stomach. You know, the whole bottom line is that we need to change our thinking. It is not about push farmers out, push this out, put this warehouse out so we can ship stuff around that is made somewhere else and brought here to be shipped somewhere else. If nobody's working, nobody's going to buy it. Plain and simple. That's it. And so we need to change the way things work. We need to change work.
Thank you.
Kathy Van Lou, four thirteen South Filbert Street, New Carlisle. Am I wrong, are the numerous radio commercials running on several stations daily, and an online survey, and a new website regarding the IEC unprecedented for promoting an industrial area? The radio ad with their smooth-talking announcer is like painting a picture with Bob Ross, if you know him, and definitely much more expensive. From the A Generation To Come website, some, their question, some people are saying that the IEC will use twenty-two thousand acres of farmland, is that true? Their answer, no, it's not, that, that is an, an extreme exaggeration. IEC has always been a much smaller project, consisting of seventy-two hundred acres. This is not an extreme exaggeration, under the title Land Availability, page sixty-one in the eighty acre, in the eighty-page, what I call a book, put out by the IEC. It states, with six thousand acres of land, master planned for various enterprise uses, and additional sixteen thousand available for future development, the IEC has the necessary land required to support a variety of industrial, manufacturing, agriculture, and other enterprise uses. Question, some people are also saying that the center will create pollution for as many as one hundred thousand people. Is that true? Their answer, no, it's not true, and the businesses that will be attracted to the IEC are non-smokestack, clean, and environmentally friendly. Deb Fleming said the other night that there would be no smokestacks. How can she guarantee that? The energy plant employing twenty-two people spews out humongous clouds, which an employee stated contains CO2, but not as much as we get from the West, such as, meaning Gary, and that's not very reassuring. Question, is the county forcing people to sell their land? Their answer, no one is forcing anyone to do anything, and everyone understands that this is an investment in our future, especially for our children of St. Joseph County. Then why was there a court battle over some property there? The owner wanted to keep it for the next generation, and why has the term eminent domain been bandied about? The county is paying an exorbitantly high price for very few acres. How is this an investment for the few, for the younger children of the generational families there? Are they not a part of St. Joe County, and should they not be able to continue to fulfill their dream of living on the family farm? Here are the true generation-to-come kids. They live on two acre, two hundred acres of land with five family homes. They are in the bullseye of this, and there's, they're into their fourth generation. They have horses and raise hay and corn on their land. They raise animals for 4H and want to continue carrying on their heritage. On, and, on the website, the pictures of the children, the happy children, and the dog with the flag in his mouth, running free, are pulled from some site. They do not show the true community to come. That dog is going to get hit by the trucks, and those children will not have grass to run on if concrete and asphalt and industry is covering the land. It bothers me greatly that five non-elected people have all the power over the protests of hundreds in making such life-altering decisions and giving Mr. Shalial what essentially amounts to a blank check and carte blanche on spending. Now, the, the survey monkey questions, talk about a perfect name, this is a bunch of monkey business. The most controversial question is, do you live in a part of the county where you feel free to express your support for a project like this? Two things stood out to me, Mr. Shalial said recently.
You're, you're, you're passing time trying to.
Yeah, I'm done. Two, two things he said that really stuck out. They want to take out the risks for the developers, and without the IEC, there is a limited quality of life. What about the people there and the quality of their lives? There's a real saying, cowboy up and rein in the IEC.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sue Kessel, four oh two two Kennedy Drive, South Bend. Couple things, one is, I, um, I spent my summers on a farm, and it's an incredible life, and there's an old saying, don't criticize with your mouth full. Farmers feed us, and we need to remember that. It's our heritage, and once you get rid of those farms, they're never coming back. You can't restore them. If you're going to do redevelopment, it should be development over scarred land. We have plenty of scarred land. I drive past it on Sample Street, Walnut Street, burned-out abandoned places. Those are the places we need to put this kind of thing. The second thing I wanted to bring up, um, I feel like going to different meetings that, we're not financially aware of all the different budgets. There's the Mishawaka budget, there's the county budget, there's the South Bend budget, the three bigger ones, and I feel like there needs to be some analysis so that the spending and the debt is, is understood on how they all interact. Lake and St. Joe County's got an extension from two thousand and eight with the idea where you're supposed to reduce our debt. Instead, the debt's gone up, and that's not a good thing. I think we need to study the impact of TIF and how it has a downward pressure on some things. I also think we should think about what will happen if the census count for South Bend goes under a hundred thousand, because that's going to substantially change funding, federal funding, state funding, um, big time, and that's also going to affect all the players around it. I think, um, it would also be good to analyze the taxation areas. We've got huge parts of the county that are not-for-profits. Take that out on the map, and then take out all these tax sale properties, and then take out, um, all the government properties. Those of us paying property taxes, it's getting smaller and smaller, and our prices are going higher and higher. I think there needs to be a real analysis of that, especially who got abatements. You know, I keep hearing from the city, oh, tax abatement, it's free money. It's not free money. Tax abatements are the government's receivables, and when you give a tax abatement, you're giving away funding that pays our bills, and so I think that also needs to be analyzed. We also, I'm also concerned, talking Michael Cruck, um, our, a number of tax sale properties has gone up substantially. I think they're around two thousand, and now there's about three thousand. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle. A radio ad in support of the Internet, Indiana Enterprise Center proclaimed a future for your kids. Allow me to give a quick history lesson about this proven bad idea. Elwood, Illinois, with a population of twenty-two hundred in two thousand and two, was a farming community just south of Chicago. People with ideas of logistics and warehouses development pitched the plan to local officials who welcomed the opportunity to better their community. The original sales pitch was that these interests would take over and clean up an abandoned ordinance factory, facility in Joliet, a city adjacent to Elwood, and build the intermodal, a logistics and warehouse area which would provide job opportunities to the locals. It was a win-win for everyone. The explosives would be cleaned, cleaned up, and the place would be prettied up with some nondescript warehouses which would provide jobs to the locals of Elwood and Joliet, and in turn, these locals would spend and invest their earnings in the community. There would be jobs for everyone. Retail business owners and entrepreneurs with fresh ideas would be flushing consumers. Home builders wouldn't be able to keep up with the demand for the new housing. Elwood would be a thriving and robust community. All the developer got was a twenty-year tax abatement. What a deal. But as history has taught us, these were misrepresentations at the least, if not flat-out lies, of what the reality of, was to come. There have been two new retailers in Elwood since two thousand and two, a Dollar General and a Subway. Although the temporary employment agencies have flourished with ninety-nine new temp agencies since two thousand and two, who maintained the steady flow of seventy percent temporary workforce who are operating on a, on ninety-day contracts without a guarantee of even daily employment, at a wage of twelve to fifteen dollars per hour, and no guarantee of even, and, I'm sorry, of, of twelve, fifteen dollars an hour, and, and no guarantee even daily employment, these workers can't afford to live in Elwood, the Elwood area, and commute daily from their homes in western Indiana and south Chicago, contributing little or nothing to the economy of the Elwood community. Nothing does except for the wear and tear that twenty-five thousand trucks per day, three hundred and sixty-five days per year, bring. So with a twenty-year tax abatement, which keeps any taxes from improvements within the TIF district unavailable for road repairs to the public, to public roads and infrastructure, Elwood assumed a thirty-million-dollar bond, which it has no hopes of ever paying off, and still can't keep the roads and infrastructure outside of the TIF area sound. As for my brothers and sisters and brothers in the building trades who see this as a great opportunity for employment close to home during the construction phase of these businesses, it's not going to happen, because in two thousand and twelve, Governor Daniels passed right-to-work for less legislation. That work will be done by poorly-trained, unskilled, low-cost workers from places like Georgia, Alabama, Tennessee, and Kentucky. Our well-trained, highly-skilled, dedicated to the community neighbors will continue to travel unreasonable distances to find the wages, hours, and conditions of employment they so richly deserve. Why ravage and destroy our farmland in northwest St. Joseph County? This is some of the most fertile ground anywhere in the world. Revitalize the brownfields. Retrain and re-energize the disenfranchised workforce from that area, who in many instances could walk to work. We will not stop fighting, and neither should our elected officials stop fighting for what is best for our land and their constituents, not outside interests. Stop the waste of taxpayer dollars, which will devastate the land that we love. Show the I, IEC the D O O R. We will remember in November. Don't forget history, and affixed to the back of this are the names of people, residents of New Carlisle and Olive Township, who have the same sentiments. And I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thank you.
I'm somebody. I count. My cam in St. Joe County, under with office on the second floor. It's a couple, two, two things I want to point out. One, I think it's really important, I want to stress again, my support for the resolution, and I know. and I'm not sure where it's at with you all. It would give the county council some of the same authority that they have in Elkhart County to look at spending by the Redevelopment Commission. In a perfect world, you wouldn't need that. In a perfect world, you'd have this equipoise between economic development and planning. I want, you know, I had an interesting conversation with Commissioner Fleming and Mayor Mueller, and he talked about this creative tension where you have, you have your folks that are out there in charge of economic development, and they're out there trying to make a splash and do what they need to do and do what their job requires them to do, but you also have the planners who look, and they, they look and they talk to the folks in the neighborhoods, as some of these folks are brought up here so eloquently. They look at the overall plan, and they say, okay, we know that you want to develop this land here, you want to bring in this particular business, but how does it, does it really read down to the benefit of the common good? Okay, so this is creative tension. Quite honestly, I'm not seeing that in county government. I'm not seeing a, that balance. I'm not, I'm, I'm looking at an area plan commission, and I'm talking to some of our planners here that are, for one reason or another, kind of on the sidelines. Why that is, I don't know. But that's just my observation of being around here every day. I, I see, you know, there's this great thrust toward economic development, a lot of excitement. Now we've got this, this, these commercials and whatnot, but to what extent are we bringing in to the, bringing the, the planners into this whole thing? So we've got an issue here. It's, it, things are, are out of whack. So in that, to that end, and frankly, with some of the folks who are going to be leaving from area plan commission, I don't know that that vacuum's going to be filled, to be real honest with you. So I think I would really appreciate if, if you all would take up the, the, take up the resolution that we talked about earlier, which would give you a little more authority over some of the spending of the Redevelopment Commission, because I think, you know, the council should exercise that authority. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Thoyn?
Mike, Mike Cammon, could you give us an update on the E R P?
You all are going to love this. About a financial system, so stay awake, okay? Thanks, Mr. Thoyn. The, at this point in time, we have two principals kind of on the point, Bree Roberts and Jet, excuse me, John Butler, I've designated to kind of be the, the, the project managers, if you will, meeting with the various department heads that are, and folks that are in the fund, that we work with a financial system, folks that actually be touching this financial system to get a handle on, you know, just exactly where we stand and what we're going to, what they will need. We did this, what, three years ago, we went through the building and, and tried to assess who was in what position and what they actually needed, and so now we have to kind of, we have, we're going back and we're making sure that when, you know, folks from Tyler get here, that is exactly what these folks need. So that's progressing. Also, there is a great deal of, of, of development with regard to the implementing of this sort laying the infrastructure for the I T. So Scott Senef is busy working with the folks from Tyler, just to make sure that we're, you know, when we go ahead and we start to make these connections, that it's, it's, it's able to work. So he's doing that, we've got Ms. Robertson and Mr. Butler doing their job, and then we meet every Thursday at nine o'clock to, to make sure that we all stay on task, and I would say beginning of March is when we're going to have folks come in here from Tyler and start hitting the ground and working, starting probably in my department with the financial, the financial area with John Murphy, who by the way is, is doing better, not great, but doing better. In addition to that, we're, I'm pushing for a meeting with N Focus, that we need two people that will help in the, help Mr. Senef, and so another person that will help out for a year in, in purchasing and with Bree Roberts. So I'm also pushing to make sure that that, you know, we get, we stay on track with that, so that these people have the resources that they need to do their jobs and then some. So that's the, the, the gist of it at this juncture. Probably, we will have broader meetings with those of you who are involved, you know, on the, in the, with the larger task force in March. Right now, it's just the three of us meet once a week, and we touch base with Scott Senef, but once Tyler gets here, we'll have planning meetings. Also, I will then be, will be providing charts of progress and whatnot, so that you can keep track of, you know, you can see on a regular basis, here's, here are the benchmarks, here's what we're hitting, so that you'll have all that information, so we'll keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to take advantage of privilege of the fourth table? Hearing none, next is a motion to adjourn. Your second? All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.